Committee of the Hazel Park Board of Education Order on November 10, 2025 at 5:30. Can I have a roll call, please?
Beaton.
Here.
Becker. Fortress.
Present.
Fox.
Here.
Lepronwy.
Here.
Rutey.
Here.
Skent.
Just a quick comment. Nate may show up late. He got stuck at work. Okay. Can I please have an approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support. Roll call? Oh, discussion? Roll call?
Fortress.
Yes.
Beaton.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Lepronwy.
Yes.
Lepronwy.
Yes. Okay, public comments. Anybody wishing to speak? You'll have five minutes now. Please be respectful. And I have two people. Jennifer Jackson, please state your name and address when you go ahead.
Jennifer Jackson, 139 West Robert Avenue. Our school district had another credible threat to the safety of students last night. This is the second in nine months. As you recall, this past February, a student brandished a firearm in the high school, threatening the safety of another. Last night, thank God, an online threat was handled very quickly by people who notified law enforcement right away and by the Hazel Park Police Department. To those who spoke up, you are brave and our community thanks you. Since the threat of violence is so prevalent in our society and clearly so close to home in our schools, I am begging our district to try something new to educate parents and students, an anti-violence initiative. Every year, parents must register their kids for the upcoming school year. Maybe a 15-minute course educating parents on their responsibility for their children, gun safety, and the consequences of threats to students and how it affects everyone's lives should be required in order for registration to be complete. A quiz at the end to make sure the information is understood. Maybe every semester, we have professionals come into our schools and do workshops with our students in the junior high and high school, interpersonal problem solving, empathy, and how to report violence and threats of violence appropriately. We've instituted lockdown drills. I remember volunteering in my son's first grade class and seeing 18 tiny students crammed into an in-class bathroom. We need to try something new. In talking with my children, ongoing proactive anti-violence education has not been something they've received. And while it seems like common sense to say, "Don't hurt your classmates. Don't threaten your classmates," we're missing something. Maybe speakers at the all-class meetings at the high school. Quick anti-violence group work during advisory class once a week for, say, the months of September and February. It seems like those are the months when kids really start going kind of wily. Maybe interactive field days where a variety of anti-violence educators explain firearm safety, improving social skills, and how to care about the safety of their environment. Even speakers who can share their survival stories in an age-appropriate way to connect with our students. I've been sick to my stomach since last night. We parents especially have to try harder to find solutions and help kids work through life in a more meaningful and thoughtful way. If a committee needs to be formed or whatever we need to do to help our current and future students develop problem-solving skills without violence, I'm game. I volunteer. Before I close, I want to thank you all. I want to thank you for having metal detectors in the high school and hopefully the junior high is next. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris Johnston.
Chris Johnston, 23781 Crosley. First off, I want to piggyback on what Ms. Jackson was saying, and I applaud everybody involved so that this all came to a conclusion without any injury to anybody. Great job for everybody involved. Thank you. What I did come up here to talk about was junior Vikings. We're transitioning from one season to the other, so I thought I'd just give you a quick update on how football went. Cheer was by far the most awesome squad that we had, taking conference championship in Flag, conference championship in freshman, conference championship in JV, and conference runners-up in varsity for competition. And our Flag football team had the most successful season in program history, being conference runners-up. All in all, there were 111 kids in the program this fall, and we were able to have a successful season with your guys' support, the school's support, support from the city and the support from the parents. Those three pillars are integral for the success of the program. So, thank you all very much. We're incredibly grateful for all the support. As we transition to wrestling, we're going into a new building. We're having conversations back and forth with the school district on how we can figure out some of the quirks. We are doing everything that we can to work with the school, and I believe that the school is working with us as well. And I look forward to communicating, having a positive discussion back and forth so that we can figure out what works the best for everybody moving forward. And I know there are parents here as well that want to say stuff in support of the program, in support of what it is that we're doing. So, I'm grateful for everything. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for all the support. Thank you.
Those were the two pieces I had. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Mr. Alonway. Thank you. It's my first time taking it, so. All right, you're next. Sorry. Mohammed Alam, just state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Mohammed Alam, 41 West Myers, Hazel Park. I'm a proud father of a student in Hazel Park and a member. He's also a part of the Hazel Park Junior Vikings. I just want to take my time first. Thank you guys for letting us use the Longfellow Building. The only concern I had is not being able to be part of my son's wrestling practices or football practices. I would like to be able to go in the building and be available if need be. You know, my son's only seven years old. There's other parents there that have younger kids. You know, it's just, it's kind of tough, you know, and I've been in his life since he's been born. So, you know, it's kind of tough for me too not to be around. I work less hours sometimes, change my schedule around so I can be a part of his life. So, I just want you guys to please take a vote and change your stance on that, on letting the parents be allowed into the building. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, done it for now. Okay, new business is next. Nothing for personnel for this month, so we're going to move on to policy. Strategic plan presentations. Is anybody, do I just go in order? Is that anybody? MASP here? Welcome.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Greg Janicki. I'm a consultant with MASP. Have been with the organization for about five years, doing strategic plans, workshops for board members.
Mr. Janicki, can you lean in a little bit? It's really difficult to hear you.
How's that?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, no worries. Did you catch that great preamble that I had, or do I need to say that again?
I just had the screen. I want to.
You want to take it all in? Yeah. So, I've been doing work with MASP for about five or six years. I think the more relevant experience to bring forward to you is that I am a former school board member. I served 12 years on the Wald Lake Schools Consolidated, Wald Lake Consolidated Schools Board of Education from 2008 to 2020. So, I appreciate the work of boards. When I left board service, I wanted to stay active in some way in supporting the great work that boards do around the state, so I became involved with MASP. And I've done seven strategic plans up to this point. I'm doing one for one of your neighbor districts right now, Clausen, just up the street. And so, hopefully I'll have the opportunity to work with Hazel Park. So, I have a real brief presentation that really talks more about the structure of how this engagement would work. Feel free to raise your hand, throw something at me. If I get in a zone and I'm not looking up, just scream my name. But I want to take a couple of minutes and at least give you an outline of how the process would work with Hazel Park. Really, any talk about doing a strategic plan has to start with the idea of the key work of boards. And I really highlight the top part there, which is all about vision. And I'll give kudos to the board and the administration for actually having in your boardroom your mission statement and your vision. Not every district that I have worked with around the state has their mission statement visible to those that come into their board meetings. And I like to say that it's not what the mission is, it's what the mission does. And what the mission does is drive your decisions each and every day. The more visible that mission is, the more visible the vision is, the more power it has in helping you guide your decisions. So, when we talk about a strategic plan, we're really talking about all of the elements that come in, district goals, the key work of the school board, the performance standards for the superintendent, and aligning that. Strategic planning is really all about alignment so that you, as a board, have a tool in which to help you guide your decisions. No entity has unlimited resources. Regardless of how many resources you have or how much money you have at your disposal, you have to make decisions on what are, what resources, what decisions are in the best interest of the organization. So, a strategic plan is simply that roadmap to help you make decisions. You can't do everything, so deciding which of the decisions that are brought before the board and then acted on by the administration are those that are going to be most likely to help achieve the mission that you said was part of why the organization exists. So, this work that you're embarking on, whether it's through MASP or any other organization, I applaud you for doing that hard work of helping you align the resources that are necessary to do the good work for our kids. So, benefits of using an outside facilitator, just a little bit around if you were considering doing this work on your own. I do facilitation work for corporations as well as for nonprofit entities and school districts, and I can say there's a tremendous amount of value of having a person in the room help facilitate that conversation. I always like to say, "The smartest person in the room is the room." And a good facilitator will help bring out the knowledge and the smartness that exists in the room. So, the work that I've done with other districts is not about the plan that is the MASP plan or the Greg Janicki plan. It is a plan that comes out from the work that is done by listening to your community and deciding what are the best actions to take as a collective set of resources to help you achieve your mission. So, my role as a facilitator is to simply ask really hard, sometimes very uncomfortable questions to get to the root of what direction, what does success look like for Hazel Park. The process, five steps generally with the MASP process. The pre-planning is simply identifying that you want to do this and then identifying that you want to partner with an organization. There is a data assessment stage, which would include us gathering information about the strengths and opportunities and vision of the district through one-on-one community, parent, staff input sessions that I would host, as well as a online survey that would be made available to all stakeholders to complete. There is also a set of data on comparison districts. Your superintendent would be tasked with identifying five different districts that you wish to compare Hazel Park to on whatever metrics that you think are relevant. And part of the data delivery will be, "How does Hazel Park compare to those districts relative to academic performance, to demographics, to finance, to staff, factors like that?" That all comes together in that middle phase, which is the strategic formulation phase, which is the heavy lifting part of our process, which takes the form of a retreat. We would be asking you to identify 30 to 35 individuals from all stakeholder groups, board members, of course, administrators, staff, parents, and other community members to come together for a full day. Yes, it's a full day, but we do feed you, where we call through all of the data that has been assembled and we do the very heavy lifting work of revisiting your vision statement, your mission statement, your belief statements, and then writing goal statements that aspirationally identify what success looks like for Hazel Park schools. It's a very intensive process. I just finished the retreat a couple of weekends ago in Clausen, and I can say it's a remarkable, insightful process that allows people to bring their energy to the process of identifying what success looks like for your schools and for your community. Following that, we have an administrative-only implementation meeting where we take all of the work that had been done at the retreat and work with the administrative team to identify the first-year initiatives that would be part of what is worked on. And in that meeting, it's really critical that the administrative team is making those tactical decisions, those operational decisions, based on the work that had been done up to that point to identify the initiatives that will be taken on in that first next academic year. And then, in the end, MASP makes our final presentation of the report. I like to say that implementation is where strategy goes to die, so the hard work for all of you is not the next five months of work that would go into creating a strategic plan, but it is in monitoring that plan and holding the administrative team accountable for delivering on that. That is the hard work. All right. So, I talked a little bit about the needs assessment phase, the stakeholder input, the educational data audit from the surrounding districts, the planning retreat. We do, again, lots of work there to look at what's the current environment for education and then what are the very specific things that are happening in Hazel Park schools that we need to pay attention to. The implementation meeting that I mentioned is where we finalize those high-level goal statements and begin to look at what's reasonable and impactful to do in that first next year. It's important that any district identify what are the things that are most important to do in that next year because it's really easy to get lost on all of the great stuff that comes out of the input and start chasing, you know, it's the squirrel chasing the dog, or is it the dog chasing the squirrel in one way or another, right? Squirrel, squirrel, right? You always can chase something. But what the board will have in their hands following the work of the strategic plan is a means to ask powerful questions of the administration of, "You're asking us to approve this particular initiative. Tell us how this is going to help us achieve our goal in this area. How is this going to help us achieve our mission?" So, you have a powerful mechanism, regardless of which institution you use to partner with. Having that way, having that guide to power your decisions is immensely valuable. Again, the documentation phase will provide you all of the transcribed work that had gone on over the previous number of months, so you'll have a lot of that data to continue the work, the sustainability work, after we depart once the plan is delivered. General timeline, roughly one to five months is how this lays out. Some of that varies a little bit based on availability of the board, also calendaring when it comes to school events or holidays. But generally, the strategic plans that I've worked with have not run past six months. So, they generally will start around this time of year, November, and go through June or early in the year and end in December. So, if your timing is to look to approve a plan to begin, this would probably kick off November, December with the input sessions, with a retreat probably sometime in February or March, and a final delivery of a plan, not knowing your exact board cadence for meetings, depending on when your board meetings are in the month, maybe May or June, would be when the strategic plan would come before you for approval. That would generally align you for the initiatives to be approved for the next academic year. So, you would be looking at 2026, 2027 academic year. Part of the services, we provide a number of templates that help you move this process along internally, templates to announce this to the community, templates to invite individuals to both take the survey as well as come to the retreat, as well as documents that can help you after the fact, particularly board monitoring, knowing that each board has maybe a different approach to how they want to be informed. We'll make some recommendations on best practices that we've seen in other school districts. The Board of Education's role in all of this, of course, is to approve the process itself, so choosing a partner that best matches your needs and timing. Of course, I'll be interviewing you if we're selected, so I'll get your input. That goes into the vat of information. You encouraging participation from your community is critical to this. We need as many voices as possible. Suggesting participants to the retreat, and then adopting the strategic plan once that's presented to you when the process is over, again, probably May or June. All right, I ran through that quickly, but I wanted to make sure I got the process to you and respected your time, knowing that you didn't want me up here until 11 o'clock tonight. So, I'll pause and ask, "What questions do you have about our process?"
Anyone have questions? I actually had somebody. You answered them as you went along. So, I'll see if everybody... Anything else? All right, Amy. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg.
Anybody from ASA? That's how you're sitting. Thank you.
Let me get my slides up. Bear with me here for a second. I'm trying to share my screen. Okay, I think I've got, bear with me here. Is that showing Hazel Park schools?
Yes.
Wonderful. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can. Okay, terrific. Okay. Well, first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to spend some time talking with you tonight. My name is Jeff Korchinsky, and I've been working at ASA for approximately five months. Prior to that, I worked at Batel for Kids and was there for about five years. And we were the company that had facilitated your Portrait of a Learner journey. So, today I thought what I would do is I'd give you a little bit of an overview of the work that we do, how we fit in, and our approach, and then I'll open it up for questions, if that's okay. So, with that, a little bit about ASA. So, ASA is an organization that's been around for about 150 years, a professional community of approximately a little over 10,000 education leaders from across the country. We serve as the national voice for public education and district leadership on Capitol Hill. We have a variety of different services that ASA supports districts with. However, one of the things we're going to be talking about most today is around our district services and how we work with school systems across the nation. As I mentioned, July 1, Batel for Kids joined ASA, and this acquisition really did two things. From an ASA standpoint, it allowed them to continue to build upon the support that they're providing to school districts around the country and kind of build and deepen that work. And from our perspective at Batel for Kids, it was to allow us to scale this work and to kind of maximize the reach and also leverage the expertise of ASA. So, from our standpoint, it's been a terrific transition. I would say about 80% of the people from the team from Batel for Kids moved over to ASA. About 15% of our people from Batel ended up moving over to another company. It was actually, we had also had a learning platform that had been developed, and we provided some unique services to some regions around the country. And that business was kind of sent over to another company. So, those people moved over, and then about 5% of the people ended up retiring. So, from our standpoint, it's been a very good transition and something that we've been very pleased with as we've continued to kind of work through this. So, with the acquisition of ASA, there, all of the services that Batel for Kids had been developing continued. So, these now became what we call our district services, beginning with the visioning work around the portrait of a learner, moving into strategic plan and operationalizing that work, then the community compass, developing roadmaps around how to bring this work and actually think about the implementation of this and start to thinking about the shifts and the changes necessary to maximize this work. And then also communications and PR and capacity building and professional learning and support. So, these are all services that we had been providing to school districts and have continued now through the ASA organization. We have organized these services across really four areas. The first one is around readiness, and it's around alignment, activation, and future readiness. So, it's kind of thinking about, "How do we best prepare? And how do we work with our community to develop that plan and that vision?" So, it's building support, building support through the community, but also ensuring that from an internal standpoint that we also have support for this work. Then moving into the portrait to practices around, "How do we now start to develop the tools and the resources that are needed to help shift the system, the educators, and leadership in maximizing this work?" Portrait to Impact is around assessing this work and how to ensure that we have evidence of learning and the appropriate ways to measure and ensure that this is sustainable. And then ultimately, Portrait to Pathway, which is really thinking about how to ready students so that we're ensuring that they're ready for the four Es. And again, whatever pathway they choose, that could be education, entrepreneurship, enlistment, and employment. Having facilitated your Portrait of a Learner, we will ensure that kind of whatever strategic goals and initiatives that are developed are aligned with this vision. That is a big aspect of this work. We really believe that taking We really believe that taking this aspect and really taking what the community and the organization has developed and incorporating that with rigorous academic content will allow us to ensure that we're creating the effective learning experiences that we need for our kids, so that it's not just certain kids, it's all kids. It's ensuring that they achieve and that they are ready for the development of the whole child and to be future-ready as individuals, again, regardless of whatever pathway they choose to take. We will, as we go through this work, we're going to be thinking about some of the necessary shifts that will likely have to take place as we're thinking through the strategic plan. So our focus will be on developing the priorities and then maximizing the shifts to think about, you know, when we think about the leaders, how are they creating the conditions to maximize the priorities that have been developed? How do these priorities need to then potentially be incorporated and embraced across the district? How are the educators going to then design the experiences to support the priorities? And then from a system standpoint, what are some of the systems that are in place that might need to be modified or enhanced to kind of sustain this culture so that this is a sustainable effort moving forward and that we're actually achieving the results that we're looking for? The approach that we're going to take is to, is to really leverage that Portrait of a Learner and kind of focus on how we best operationalize this work. You know, how does this work get resourced? How do we organize around it? How do we prioritize? How do we, how do we kind of develop progress and monitoring to realize this portrait? But also taking into consideration that we also need to leverage the rigorous academic content so that we do this in a cohesive way to allow our students to kind of then show how they're learning and ensure that they're learning in the most effective way, but also ensuring that they're going to be ready for the future, again, no matter which direction that takes. We're also going to be kind of reviewing some of the past practices, looking at your previous strategic plan, determining the progress made, and kind of validating, you know, what we, what we kind of identify and where we see as some potential opportunities. And also what now has changed as a result of the Portrait of a Learner. So as we, as we go through this, we're going to then ensure we kind of capture additional data and use it to validate our approach. So we'll start to identify some initial priorities, and then based off of that information, that will then allow us to then determine what additional data do we need to validate this or to refute this. And then our goal is to ensure that we kind of collect this. We also then collectively develop this and both to find a balance between being an aspirational plan, but it's also simple and tactically aligned with the priorities that have been developed across the district. From a process standpoint, the design team, we're going to have several meetings that will allow us to kind of, as I mentioned earlier, review the past strategic plan, what was completed, what still needs to get done, and what still makes sense. There'll be some visioning exercises where we're going to start focusing on what success looks like five years from now, and then also thinking about what additional data. And as we go through some assessments and some protocols, we're going to capture some additional information, which then helps us start to develop some of these priority areas that we know will then have to be validated. We'll complete a current state analysis, which allows us to look at kind of opportunities and areas where we can continue to build upon, and looking at some performance metrics as well. And this information will all be aggregated and shared back to the team. Based off of that, that then allows us to then take this information, then in subsequent meetings, to start to identify what these, if these priorities still, the prior priorities that we had identified still make sense, and what is the data telling us? And what, what might we need to adjust or validate or refute based off of what this data is telling us? What typically will happen is some new priorities will emerge, and there'll be a fair amount of discussion that will take place to allow us to, again, discuss, determine, and ensure that what we are moving forward with is going to be representative of where we want to move as a school system. And then based on these priorities, we're going to then start talking about some of the objectives and some of the tactical approaches that we're going to need to be taking. So how do we then take this information? We're going to start developing kind of a direction, but then how do we then share this with the community and the board to gain additional buy-in and support? And we'll have to make some decisions with the team on when we pull in additional members from the community. As part of the Portrait of a Learner process, we had some representation from the community that were part of that. And many times, we'll leverage those individuals and also expand it to others to include into this process so that we're able to capture and, and ensure that we're hearing the input from a variety of different constituents, all taking into consideration about where we want to move forward as a district and how best to get there. Ultimately, once we have some content that we believe and are comfortable with, we'll then ultimately take that to the board for ratification. And once that is ratified in terms of the content is concerned, we will then, at that point, professionally create and, and aggregate the information in a consistent, concise way that's professionally packaged. And that also is going to be something that is actionable and simple for the community to, to be able to review, but also to ensure that this is something that the district will be able to continue to utilize and to allow them to continue to focus upon as they move forward, managing through this over the next three to five years. From a tools and support resources standpoint, kind of our role is to facilitate. We want to share information, and we want to generate discussion, kind of utilizing a variety of different protocols and tools that ensure that the strategic plan, the content is rich, it's aligned, and it's actionable. So again, as we're going through this, our goal is not to necessarily determine this is what you need to do and how you need to do it. What we want to do is, is create the conditions to have those conversations and then utilizing your team to help determine what makes the most sense. And then once we have this finalized, we'll then, again, take it to the board where we can then professional, and then receive their support so that we can then move forward and get this professionally developed and put together in a package that makes sense. From a timing standpoint, we would expect, start this work in January, and we believe that if we're able to start in the January timeframe, that we would have this completed by your May Board of Education meeting. And depending on, on the exact timing, we would either look at having the content being approved at that May Board of Education meeting and then having the, the professional packaging of the strategic plan completed in the June timeframe. If it's required that it all needs to be completely in place by the end of May, then we can certainly adjust our timing to coordinate that. But that would be ideally something that we can kind of determine and discuss as, as we're going through this process. So in a nutshell, our, our process is to operationalize this based on the Portrait of a Learner. It's to leverage the resources that we have to introduce a variety of different protocols and to really have the group think through this work and ensure that we're helping them think through what are some of the key next steps, helping them to priorities, to think about where their, where the bandwidth is, how they can potentially get this accomplished, and also to ensure that there's appropriate measurements in place so that this is something that the board and that everyone feels comfortable with as we continue to monitor and, and move forward with the progress of this work. So in, that's, in a nutshell, what I wanted to cover today, just to give you just an overview of our, of our approach, that we've been doing this work for a number of years and that it all is kind of tied back to the Portrait of a Learner work, and then also recognizing that we need to ensure that this is a localized strategic plan and something that is actionable and something that the whole, you know, organization feels strong about and has, we've been able to achieve through the use of a tremendous amount of input and conversation through the process. So with that said, I'm going to open it up for any questions.
Any questions? All right, I think we're good.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity, and I will, I will wait to hear any further conversations or any discussions that you might have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And MLI, is anyone from there?
No, MLI will not be present, so they are not able to in the short turnaround. Their presenter is on vacation that would be facilitating with us, and the director was already engaged this evening, which is why I asked to push it out to the December 1st timeline to allow MLI to present. I've placed in front of you, or sorry, online, there are all the MLI presentations and examples. So you have three very different presenters, three very different styles and differences to take a look for. I guess I would ask to you, is there additional information that you need me to work with or get from any of the organizations this evening before we bring next week for your ability to choose?
I don't think so. So you have something additional to this?
Yes, it's all uploaded in your board packet. It looks like this.
Your MLI's on.
It has all the different presentations, as well as strategic plan, examples of three different strategic plans, one's kind of written the longer way, two of them are done in more of a parent-friendly atmosphere, and...
Okay, I did look at those.
Okay.
Now that you, show me.
Yes. So hopefully they're organized. If you need us to print them out for you, please let us know, or you need any additional information.
Was there? I didn't see a cost associated with the MLI.
There's what?
I didn't see a cost associated with that.
Yes, it was in their letter, and I believe that it was $9,000.
I think that one was less than $1,000. I think you're right. It was like 62 plus $1,000 or something.
Yeah, $6,200 plus a maximum of $1,000 for expenses and travel.
Thank you for that, because I just have the plans in front of me.
It is the, so Heidi, if you look at their letter, it's the very last page, if you want to glance at it.
The proposal was at the bottom. Oh, no, that was ADE's proposal. And MLI, yes, it's at the bottom here.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
And they certainly would be willing to come at a different time. They just tried and they could not.
Okay, moving on then. Wellness committee update.
I'll go to Kristy.
Uh, yeah. So the next wellness committee in the meeting is going to be on November 18th. It is virtual, from 3:30 to 4:15. On that agenda, we will be adopting our assessment tool. I have included in the invite for the members the Wellset 3.0 example in order for them to look at it. That is a federally approved assessment tool that you could use for your wellness. We also need to look at the triennial, triennial assessment that has to be done. I plan on discussing the MDE sample as well as the Wablae sample. Wablae also uses Miller Johnson for their policies, so I thought that going out and finding someone who is A-level and B-using a company, or using the company that aligns with our policies that we'll be adapting, made the most sense. It's also a very simple policy in comparison to some of the other districts that are using Miller Johnson. We will also review our compliance for our PE minutes, and then direct initiatives for the year. So I attached to the invite for the committee, the sample wellness policy goals from MDE as well. Any questions?
Kristy, Ms. Cales, can you forward that so I can forward it to the board so they can look at the, all those items?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just sharing a link with you for the folder that I prepared.
I'll put it in an update this week.
Okay, that's what I was going to, and you said November 18th, 3:30 to 4:15?
Correct. It'll be virtual.
Any questions or discussions?
How many people are on the committee?
So the invite includes about 23 people. However, not everyone was able to make it to the first meeting. I have about six or seven people who have signed up to be able to come to this next one. Hopefully, that will increase.
Well, we weren't there.
It's really six or seven.
Okay. Buildings and grounds. H-bath filters.
So during, during COVID, we agreed to do filters three times a year. And so every time we order those filters, they're a little over $5,000. And so we have that first order that we need to do. Mr. Richardson was talking back and forth about maybe we need two times instead of three. I will come back to you at a later time. I wanted to go back to best practices and discussion with our teachers' union, because it was part of the agreement during that time to do filters three times. And I'm, I'm not as up to date at this point in time on whether that's still best practice or that was best practiced during COVID, but that might be a future conversation we have. So since this is over $5,000, we're, we will bring it to you next week. Are there any other questions you'd like answered before next week on the filters?
If we're changing them three times a year, can we buy them in bulk and get a discount?
That's a good question. Let me find out. Any other questions?
I was just going to say that. Any other questions? All right, moving on. Snowplow.
Okay, we answered some of the questions regarding the snowplow. So we do have a, the snowplow that was placed on our three-year plan and then uploaded. And then in the meantime, we found that the snowplow is a little more expensive than what we thought. So we do know that not all of our trucks have snowplow, and so we're asking to purchase the snowplow in order to make sure that we can get our, all of our snow done on a timely basis.
Any questions or discussion?
I do. I'm not about this, but a few years ago, the board approved a plow on the front of a, I want to say a four-wheeler or golf cart or something like that, kind of circling like a sweeper. Was that ever purchased?
Yes, I believe, I've not seen it. I think it was done last year. It's in the buildings. It's a sweeper on a, on a tractor that then they used during the year.
Any other discussion? Finance, budget question.
I believe Ms. Papazian has a presentation for you on your questions over the budget.
You have three months.
Challenge accepted.
We could all only wish.
I couldn't resist.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. trustee LaFrenboise had some questions regarding the budget amendment, and so we thought we would bring our responses, we thought we would bring our responses to the meeting so that everybody could have the benefit of hearing the answers.
Question one was on the revenue page. Please tell me the complete sentence, footnote three. I believe I, I found where that was cut off a little bit, so I, we will present, or give you this presentation after. So it cut off part of approved in 2024 and then capital outlay expenses. So we will have that corrected in future amendments. Question two, we are still deficit spending by $2 million, continuing the structural deficit. Are we looking to make cuts? So our response to that is that we are continuously looking for efficiencies in areas we can make cuts with minimal impact to instruction. So I want to just point out, because we are not fully funded by the state, we incorporate initiatives in our budget like open enrollment, invest, and center programs, all of which bring us additional revenues. And then I just have here showing the 24-25 fund balance was 1.2 million. And as of budget amendment one, we are estimating the 25-26 budget balance, or not budget balance, fund balance to be 2.2 million. Question three, the $4.7 million levy from non-homestead property. This is an educated guess based on what? It's just under a... It's just under a million higher than previous years that had gone up around $100,000. So, great question. We actually use the taxable values for Ferndale and Hazel Park that we've received from the county. And we budget that at a 95% collection rate, because we know we don't receive 100%. But the, there are other reasons why the revenue line increased. It was about $300,000 this year from tax collections. The remaining increase consists of 400, around $400,000 of Ballmer funds carried over into this year. And the $150,000 reimbursement, calling it a grant, but reimbursement from the state for prior year expenses. Now, the tax collections did go up more than they normally have. I believe you said it was about $100,000 in prior years. I still have to get with the city and see, you know, what significant changes maybe were made to the tax rule. For example, I believe Amazon was, had some tax incentives. And we'll be going on to the tax capture at some point, so that could be part of our change here. But with what we normally receive, we wouldn't know what's causing the change, so I'll have to meet with the city to see what information we can find on that.
Okay, so before I'm done, now I have another question. You mentioned we get tax revenue from Ferndale, too?
Yes.
Is it like a portion, this is a portion of their city taxes, because a portion of their city goes to Hazel Park schools?
Correct.
Okay.
Question four said, on the expenditure play page, please explain with examples what basic programs under instructions are. We're cutting this by $2 million. What are we cutting? Instruction to me equates to children directly. So first, I've provided, just from the state accounting manual, what their definition was of basic programs, which is instructional activities including enrichment designed primarily to prepare pupils for activities as citizens, family members, and workers, as contrasted with programs designed to improve or overcome physical, mental, social, and/or emotional handicaps. This includes pre-K, elementary, middle, junior high, and high school. So to answer the question of specifically what cuts were made, we initially made budget reductions, and this is only reductions that will impact basic programs, so this is not an all-inclusive reduction list. But we had cut six FTEs just through attrition, smaller or larger classroom size. And then there was a staffing reduction memo October 13th that cut 12 FTEs across the district. I'm sure it's small for reading which ones, but that'll be...
You're gonna send it in, please.
Yeah.
So, okay, so, and sorry, I'm just clearing my brain. So the staff is part of the basic, so it wasn't like we cut programs, but, okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Question five was kind of two questions embedded, so I broke that up into two. So five dash one, under other financial sources, transfers in and out, every year we have had to supplement about $300,000 in transfer out. Why is this zero? I would think it would remain the same. What fund did we transfer out to in the past? So, great question again. This is not a supplement, but it is a transfer out for the 2010 energy bonds that we had issued. And the final payment will be in May of 2026. So I thought we had made the final payment, but we still have one more. So we will see that included in the second budget amendment. And we'll bring that in December to the Committee of the Whole. So five two, for transfers in, please clarify again why this jumped 1.2 million. I believe it was explained to Heidi, but I'm not sure. Was it about the income from last year that we did not receive until this year? It's actually, the increase is attributed to the Special Education 24-25 Fund Balance Transfer of approximately $750,000, along with an increase in the calculated Special Education Fund indirect costs. So the indirect cost is a percentage approved by the state, and that is applied to allowable expenses. There are some that are not allowed, but then whatever that calculation is, that'll be transferred to the general fund. Question six, what are some examples of community services and why is this triple from 23-24? Community service consists of community schools, which is Ms. Grassley's area, funded by the Ballmer grant, as well as drug-free community schools, which is also grant-funded. Ballmer began in 23, 24-25, I'm sorry. So that's why we saw that go up significantly. On page five, total appropriated expenses are $62 million. Then the fund balances, I believe, in error. I think the transfer in was put in as an expense, not a revenue. And I think there was a dollar rounding difference with that. So that is correct. On the resolution, that was included in expenses and not revenues. So when we bring Budget Amendment Two to the Committee of the Whole in December, we will have that corrected on there. Question eight, when will we see a line item budget? I thought it should have been quarterly. When we presented the first budget amendment, we did not have everything entered into the system, so we couldn't produce that. But really, we've been working on preparing a department or a cost center reporting so that I think it's more meaningful than by function. So we've just been working towards that, and that we are, will be happy to present with the 26-27 school year. In the meantime, though, if the board would like to look at the 5,000-plus lines that we get to dig through, we can make that available electronically for review. Question nine, when will we see the separate funds in their budgets? Special ed, kitchen, activities, et cetera. We will bring these to the Committee of the Whole in December with the General Fund Budget Amendment Two. And so you'll, in December, you'll be able to see all of the funds and resolutions. Were there any other questions?
Thank you so much for taking the time to prepare that and answering all my questions. I know it's not always fun.
Oh, no, we love it.
This is probably one of the first times I've ever seen this presentation like this. And you've done an excellent job by doing it this way. You've brought the board together, because a lot of times, board members will ask separately. So now all of us are on the same page. And also out there in the public, the stakeholders can see and hear exactly maybe some of the questions they had, or they asked one of the board members. So this is so very helpful. You probably don't even, well, you might not realize it, but for Hazel Park, you don't realize how important and helpful this is. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for both of you working and getting the fit in on time and all that stuff.
Thank you, and I think this was a great way to do it, and I will plan on doing this going forward when we have questions like this.
Thank you.
Cash flow.
That's me again. So you have a memo from me. I think the important, or the burning question of cash flow is when will we be able to repay our loan? And we've had really strong tax collections, so that money's been rolling in and within current on grant reimbursement. So with that, we looked at, you know, we still calculated our cash flow and looked, we originally had a low point in September, which we've made it past that, and then in May. With our current state and our collections, what we forecasted is we will now be good in May, so we are able to pay back the loan in full in November.
It's exciting, very exciting.
Could you, I know there were some questions, and I think this is important, about interest and all of that. Can you share with the board the interest cost and the conversation we've had around that?
I could, I should have called the bank today. I don't have our payoff amount. It will be a fraction of what it would have been had we, you know, taken the loan out for a full year. I would not expect it will be more than $100,000 that we would be paying for the time that we did have the loan, which was helpful, not only getting through, you know, September and where we hit the low point, but with the uncertainty if we were going to be receiving October financial aid. So I don't have the exact dollars on interest, but I will have that at the regular meeting next week.
And the other question is, could you tell, because I'm a little confused, how much interest we paid on the last loan? There's been a few numbers, if you could just look at it and come back, that would be great. Because there's a couple figures being thrown out there that I want just clarification. What did we pay on the interest of that loan?
Absolutely. I'll have that next week as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right. 31AA, double A, sorry.
Okay, we're gonna talk briefly, but I've mentioned in my weekly updates, but 31AA are dollars that have been made available for safety. And there is quite a controversy across the state regarding the use of these funds. So funds will be allocated based on those that are going to accept them. We have till the end of the month to determine, and so we'll have a conversation at the next board meeting regarding this. And the 31AA funds, there's some conversation on whether or not that you would have to indemnify or allow your staff to be interviewed and lose their protective status if you accept these funds. I think even in a weak timeframe, we continue to hear different guidance, and so we'll have some recommendations for you about that. Please continue to look at your MASV, MSBO, AASA, or sorry, IASA or MAS, all the different groups that are talking about the 31AA. For Hazel Park, it's a lot of money. And so I think that this will be a conversation that we will have, and you might have some attorney guidance about what to do. I think attorney firms are split on what to do, and so we look forward to having more conversations, and I will send any information that comes to you during the week.
We have a discussion about this at the Travis City Convention that I went to, and they said pretty much the same thing. It's individualized districts, whatever you decide, make sure you consult with your attorney. So, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Nope, all right. Finance Consultant update.
Sure. So Friday, we met with Mr. Sovi and his consultant to discuss the first two-hour training that went with really kind of talking about what this is and the timeframes that the team and individuals be putting in, the concept around zero-based budgeting. We set a meeting date of December 1st aligned with, let me double-check if it's December 1st.
Yes.
It is, okay. December 1st, which aligned with our workshop meeting that day, because the administrators will be responsible for meeting in the morning, and we're gonna try to pull them in the best as possible. We're really struggling to get our administrators out of the building at this time, given the work that they're doing inside, and it's also evaluation time as well. And so we're going to try to get the, we've set up an elementary time and a secondary time, so they can hear this from Mr. Sovi. Then the community will be invited, or the, sorry, the teachers will be invited, not the community, in the afternoon. They've been sent an invite already with an explanation in the staff update, so that maybe people can get it on their calendar. He says oftentimes not many people come. We'll see, you know, what happens here in Hazel Park. We gave them a primary notice. And then he will calculate all that information and then speak with you in the evening. He said it's about a 30-minute presentation for the Board of Education. So we have a busy night that night. We're gonna have a closed session. We will have a safety presentation. We will also have a student system of support presentation, and we will also have Mr. Sovi. Then we scheduled him for an Ad Council meeting in the future as well. And then he will also, we are gonna have to work to schedule six meetings for the administrators between April, March, and April, to come in as well to work on the budget. I will continue to say, between strategic planning and this, I'm very concerned already at the stress that you are asking to put on our administrators, and I've already heard from them out of concern. I'm deeply concerned that they will not participate in strategic planning and that this will kind of top them over the edge. Some of the things that he talked about is in the importance of aligning this to our strategic plan. So again, an additional concern I have is that we're gonna do a strategic plan at the same time that we're working on this versus doing this after the strategic plan. Listen, we're all in. We're gonna do as the board has directed us to do, but I would, I would struggle if I didn't tell you some of the feedback that we had. I think he was very informative. I think it was great information and obviously a really well-thought-out plan, and we've started to schedule those meetings, but I am concerned at the load that we are continuing to ask the administrators to do on top of strategic planning and our normal items that are happening today and every day in the buildings. Thank you. I don't know if anybody else wants to provide any comments of our meeting.
All right, any other comments or questions or concerns from the board? All right. Through your plans.
You ready? Okay. So we were asked, when I returned, to bring forth the three-year plans by November, and so we have provided 25-26, our thoughts, 26-27, 27-28. These three-year plans are to be the basic basis for developing the following year budget. And so these are items that we are hoping to complete, but obviously, depending on the ebbs and flows of the budget, and anything over $5,000 or things that haven't already been approved, we would bring in front of the board, as you will see in our next one regarding the sinking fund. And so as a cabinet, we collaborated and went through these items now that needed to be done last spring, and it will make it even easier for updating as we go into next year, because in February, we'll look at all of these items again and make some projections going forward. I think for the sinking fund, one of the things that I would be bringing in the second, after the new year starts, is going ahead and doing an RFP for building assessments. Our last one is 2021, and so it's about five years to do that again. So on top of that, we will be needing to do a building assessment, which is another thing that has to be done on top of the strategic plan. Hopefully, that building assessment will guide some of those activities and outcomes and also change that sinking fund as well, and also be a guide to whether or not, after that point in time, with the recommendations of the strategic plan, on whether or not you want to go for a bond at the next time of the reduction of our rate, which I believe is 2027. Did you have specific questions about the three-year plan? I want to commend the team, because it was a tremendous amount of work to kind of bring those back up and alive and relook at every item. And I, again, I think that'll align us even further as we move into the 26-27 planning year.
Can we just go through exactly what we're looking at? I have the communication one, I have a three-year building and plan, and then I have a five-year facility assessment.
Sure.
But it doesn't look like it's five years, so I'm...
Yeah, that's a wrong title. So we have a technology plan that has been given, which is a three-year plan of Buildings and Grounds, and that's really your sinking fund plan, or no, sorry. Buildings and Grounds are like things that can't go in the sinking fund. So you can't put, at this point, trucks and other components of the truck, or weed whips, or tractors, or anything along those cannot be in the sinking fund. The next time we go, which would be the 2029, is when our sinking fund is up, the trucks can be placed into a sinking fund, but at this point in time, we're not approved for that. I believe it had to be after 2023 school year. So these are just the items that we know need to be replaced. And obviously, each time we go to replace, and Greg brings and says, this is what I need to get and when, we're gonna look at that plan and make sure the plow is in there, but he thought it was 25... 2,500, and it's much greater than that now to go on those trucks. So, you know, those are the ebbs and flows. Then, yes?
I'm sorry to stop you, but, so if I'm looking at this communications one?
I don't, I'm not sure what the communication one is.
IT.
Oh, it's community school.
IT, I'm sorry. So we've already spent $200,000, and we anticipate to spend another 472, round up 473,000.
No, we have the, the plan in 25, 26 is $217,000 for the 25, 26. The discounted equipment is $255,000 for E-rate, and I don't know, Brad, if you want to come out and speak more specifically to that.
Okay, I didn't see the E-rate, I got it now, okay. So we plan on spending another 217,000?
Yes, and that, if you look at the sinking fund, 300,000 each year is placed into the sinking fund for approval. If we spend it, we spend it. If we don't, then that money carries over to what we might need, or things that we don't know that pop up all of a sudden, which could happen. The community school is the community school plan for Mrs. Gressley, and I'm sorry, it's not communication, and it really is the community school grant that we have, showing how that is funded for the next several years for us. And then we will, obviously, they allow that, us to go for another cycle, and so we'll obviously go for another cycle for approval for that as well.
And this is all grant-driven?
That is all grant-driven. We also have the three-year sinking fund plan, and so we went, and I sent out also to the principals, the things that they would like to see that are on there, and we've narrowed down what we feel are probably the most important projects, and we will, we had to take some off, because, you know, we had to stay within the guidelines, and so we've kind of pushed those over. We will ask you in the next memo to start investigating that and bringing those dollars back to you of the actual costs, and then obviously, the board would then decide if they want to go out for RFP, and if they do want to go out for RFP, then that step would go forth, and you would only approve those once you get the RFPs. Sometimes, as we know from the past, that when people bring quotes in, they're excessive of what we spent, or what we suggested, depending on where we are with the economy, and the board always has the benefit at that point in time to deny and say, "We're gonna wait a year and go out again," which has been done in the past. I believe we saw that with some of the Edison School work we did in the very beginning.
Okay, I have a quick question. Did you move on?
Nope.
Because the, is the facility assessment the sinking fund?
So the sinking fund plan is called the three-year sinking fund in the, in the memo you're talking about?
Yes, so the, so the sinking fund approvals...
Right, so it says technology plan, buildings and grounds plan, teaching and learning plan, community school plan, and the sinking fund plan.
So what's the facilities, is that something different?
That's the buildings and grounds plan, and then the facilities are in sinking fund. Any facility work can be done in the sinking fund.
Okay, so that's the sinking fund?
Yes.
It doesn't say sinking fund, it says facilities, or at least not on this page. Okay, that's why I was a little confused.
And I'm sorry, you were talking so fast. When was the, when were you planning to do the assessment, facility assessment?
I would bring it to you in the new school year, so that we can, you know, work, we have a couple RFPs that we're gonna need to do. If we do the facility plan, that would be an RFP. We would need to do an RFP for audit, and I already have samples of an RFP for food service this year. And so, again, those are the things that we will need to do come January. Probably is not in our best interest to try to do them in December, you know, wait till the new year, and then all of those things will have to be, go out to RFP. So probably at the January committee, the whole, we would bring you examples for you to review to go out, with probably the facility assessment being done in the spring. That would probably also include the ropes again, getting scans of the rope.
Does this have the Hoover sign in here?
We did not have the Hoover sign as one of the items that are on the request for approval.
All right, just a note that they're the only elementary school that doesn't have the electric sign, and it just...
Jardon and Webb does not have an electric sign either.
I know, Webb does.
No, and neither do we here. Yeah, the only electric sign at the elementary is United Oaks, the junior high, United Oaks when you're really near.
I thought Webb had one too.
And then we bought one for the high school last year at the very beginning. That wasn't one of the top priorities that we listed. Certainly, the board can ask us to go out for bids.
No, I just know that they were on the other strategic plan, so, or the other assessment, so...
It looks like our teaching and learning plan memo was not uploaded. I apologize for that. We'll get that uploaded for you, that has all the costs for teaching and learning. We apologize for that.
Thank you.
These are all guides for us to bring things forward to you.
It's helpful making decisions, so I appreciate it.
You're welcome. We will update them in a couple months.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, moving on to the sinking fund approvals. This is where I thought we were confused, or was it?
Yeah, they're up there in the sinking plan. So when we reviewed and sent out, these are the top ones that we feel need to be brought forth for bidding. We know that our bathrooms at Webb and at Jardon, as well as at Advantage, really need some updating, so we'd like to do a set this year and get them quoted for Webb. One of the things that we could do, if the board chose to, is get the plans for all of them at Webb and Jardon, and then you pick out the ones, right, so that you have the plans and the assessment. We did that at the high school, we had the drawings, everything done ahead of time, and we could do all of that all at once, and bring an RFP for one, you know, just one set, and then one set, one set, one at the Advantage and one at Webb. And then the playground at Hoover, you know, I just attended a wonderful meeting at the ISD where they were talking about building a new center for ASD in the northern part, and they had a beautiful playground upgrade, and the cost was about 150,000. The discussion about playgrounds really comes around to accessibility, and we have a lot of children with special needs. We also have seen a lot of children hurt at Hoover, and so kind of redoing that, redesigning it, one playground at a time. We felt like Hoover with some of our programs that are over there as well, and the proximity to the high school and activities, that that would be the first one that we would recommend to be done. And so it would be, we would, we would work with a playground organization to come up with a quote for the board. The welding room upgrades at the high school, we've talked about it for years, we've been over there before. He only has two areas, so when you have a class of 10, only two students can work at a time, and he has to keep the other ones on non-hand-on activities. We have a gem of a teacher over there. We may be able to get some of this with CTE, we'll have to wait and see, just like we purchased before, but we're not sure of that yet at this point in time, but we are really hoping to get that upgraded to continue to grow that program. We've had several students go into welding programs right out of there, and so it's pretty exciting. He does a great job. And then the last one for this year would be United Oaks carpet replacement. In the 10 years that I've been here, every year, we've said we need to replace that carpet. It's buckled, and it has areas that I think are trip hazard. This is not for classrooms, this is only for the first and second floor, and we do know that that would cost, I believe, I think it was $88,000 for that carpet, because we had the guy look at it. We would not recommend putting carpet in unless the board really wanted to do carpet. We would recommend do the same kind of flooring that we do, we have at the high school, one that's cleaner, no allergies, and easier to, you know, take care of for the custodians.
Are those the squares?
No, it is the, like, the vinyl, the gray and...
Oh, so put flooring down.
Put flooring down, yes, not the carpet. When and if we do the classrooms, when we have dollars for that, we might consider squares or we might consider flooring. I think people are moving more towards flooring, but of course, the carpet squares are fantastic too. I think that's it, and I want to really thank Mr. Richardson and Jamie for their hard work. Jamie has taken on those extra administrative assistant duties with buildings and grounds, as I have been doing it, and doing a fantastic job, and if it wasn't for her, we wouldn't have these all aligned up the way they are.
Off-the-wall question. Mr. Lantorn used to be in charge of the Webb-Jardon welding class. I just wonder if there's anything over there that could be used if the current teacher kind of walked over there and looked and seen...
He did.
Okay.
So he did go over and look, and it is not reusable, it's a little outdated.
Oh, it's all...
Yes, and part of this also cost will be putting in proper electrical to make sure that it can be pulled correctly, and then the safety reason for it being up in the ceiling, a little more professional than what we've been able to do it, and so...
Yes, thank you.
Listen, it's putting a lot of good effort into CTE, and yes, we absolutely have, did go over there. Listen, he's really good at that.
Awesome, yeah, awesome. I know Greg is too, so...
Yeah. Mr. Shirley is really a gift. Both of Mr. Benedetto and Mr. Shirley were great in our addition, you know, teacher as well, and I can't think of his last name right now.
Mr. Haas.
Mr. Haas, I was talking to the workshop, but yes, and...
Eden?
Aton, yes.
You pulled that right out of your head. That's pretty good.
But she's dealing with it all the time.
Okay, any more discussion on the sinking fund approvals?
Is there any information on, that the board would like us to bring forward before, for next week, so that we could get moving on this? The hope would be to have RFPs in December or January for each project, if we could, so that we can get bidding out. The earlier we bid, the more likely we are to get projects done. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the financials, the checkers or the credit card statements. Any questions?
I think we have a couple things that I think we said too. There's a couple credit cards that had charges on there, and those will be taken care of, and one of those credit cards will be closed.
Yeah. That was those $25 charges.
Yeah, the $25 charges.
And then in my whole list of questions, someone said, Monica and Crystal, and I'm assuming later I'll get, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, right?
I think they...
You did such a great presentation.
I think they actually maybe answered some of that today, but I unfortunately today have not touched my email. So when I get that, I will take a look and forward that to you.
That's okay. I'm just, I'm just saying, I will look for them later, not put anybody on the spot.
Probably not tonight.
I also, it's not a question, I just want to make it clear, because I know people have asked before, that the pass-through for the Promisone is just the tax recapture?
Yes.
That is it?
I actually remembered that one.
Actually, I want to correct that. That is not correct now, because we also have some bomber money that is passing, that's flowing through as well.
I'm just saying for just this specific one.
Yes, the tax capture is flowing through, and there's some bomber money that is flowing through, and we're collaborating with the Promisone on goals for community outreach, so...
Okay, now we're into other. The Toledo Art Museum trip.
Dr. Dolmich, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, so our students had the opportunity to head to the Toledo Art Museum. That was something that did occur, I think, about a week ago, and we neglected to bring it to you. It was not overnight, but it was out of state. Now, we do understand that, Dr. Wilcox spoke with all of you, and there was an understanding and agreement that they would be able to go. It's a great opportunity, it's a day-long trip, they went last year, so we always say, even though we've got guidelines in place, we're gonna do whatever we can to support kids, so even if the guidelines have to be shifted a little bit, if we can get kids there and we get approval, then we're gonna move that forward. So that was really just a miss, that we didn't get that board mounting your hands last month. So thank you for going ahead and putting that.
I will say, I talked to some of the kids, because my daughter's actually one who went to, and they had a blast. And they learned so much, and everything that he had ready for them was just amazing, so thank you all for approving that.
Okay, any other discussion on this? All right, the AP course approval.
So thank you for allowing me to bring this forward. We have really been doing a lot of work around looking at options and opportunities that we have for our students at Hazel Park High School, and one of the things that we've noticed is that while we have a small group of students with a small number of classes taking AP classes, we really wanted to provide an opportunity that was more expanded and allowed more kids to have access. So one of the things that the College Board is doing is they're really trying themselves to build some different opportunities for students. I actually had an opportunity to speak with someone from College Board in the fall, and one of the things they encouraged was for us to add something called AP pre-calculus. This course is actually designed to really expand the number of students in those courses, because typically, we have small groups of kids that choose to be in those courses based on how they're structured. This is designed for accessibility, and one of the pluses is that essentially, there's the same content that we have in our pre-calculus course, but this is an AP course. So there's a few more structures around it, and it gives them an opportunity to take that fourth-year math if they choose to do it, as well as get some credit if they pass that AP exam. So this is one of the real pluses, and another piece that's, I think, important to everybody on the board right now, because we already have a pre-calculus class, this would not be adding additional courses, additional teachers. It would really just be taking the training that our teachers would receive, as well as the curriculum, and the ability for our students to take that AP and slot it in. So we do not foresee this being an increase in staffing. This is something that our classroom, our teachers have wanted for a while. We've got the senior math, but the teachers have really felt that there needed to be something a little bit additional for that fourth-year math for our students. So we feel very strongly about this. Our math teachers are behind it, our high school principals are behind it, and it really, again, gives some better pathways, more expanded pathways for our students to go for. Any questions about AP pre-calculus?
No, but I love this.
I liked the...
We've got more.
I liked the handbook. I thought it reminded me of the old books you used to get when you went to college and you...
Yep, we're gonna get to that handbook.
I liked it.
They did a great job on that.
So that is the first course. In addition to that, we would also like to do something called Pre-AP Algebra I, different than AP pre-calculus. So AP pre-calculus, the one I just talked about, is a traditional AP course. College Board has really been pushing some of the pre-AP courses, and what it does is it really builds a trajectory for students to really understand and get into how those courses work. We thought it was really important to build that pathway in math. So while we're going to add AP pre-calculus, we decided we needed to back that up and build a foundation, starting next year with doing something called AP, or Pre-AP Algebra I. The next year, we will add Pre-AP Geometry, and then we'll add Pre-AP Algebra II the next year, a real scaffold approach. Once again, the plus when we're considering staffing and things like that, and having to be smart about that, is that's not something that would be an additional teacher. It can be used instead of a student taking Algebra I. So a student might take Algebra I, or if they choose to, they might take Pre-AP Algebra I. So our goal is to get to our eighth graders this year, talk to the students that are in that Algebra I course, or those students that are really exceeding in that eighth-grade course, and talk to them about those opportunities. We believe building this foundation will really make them be able to be successful in any AP course, and if they choose to, just to go the math pathway, by the time they get to that fourth year, taking pre-calculus or AP pre-calculus, they're gonna be ready and do well in that course. We, once again, looked at this as a way to expand access. You know, there's a perception often around AP courses, is all those are only for certain amounts, certain types of kids. That's actually not true. AP is really trying to push that. So that's gonna really actually bring me to the third one, or, yes, the third one we're going right forward. It's called AP Seminar. An AP Seminar is really focused around reading and writing and really preparing students to engage deeply in that process in college. It's actually a course that could be taught through anything, it could be taught through science, it could be taught through social studies, it could be taught through English. It's really just a foundational course that supports students in their academic career as well as AP courses. Sam Galphoff, our coordinator, has some experience with this, and she has indicated that she's spoken to students who actually have told her that that was one of the most valuable courses they took and really helped prepare them for college. So we're bringing these courses before you, because, one, we're gonna be starting to schedule in January, and, two, we're really trying to expand opportunities for students and make sure there's a lot of deep opportunities to learn that are accessible to more students. Of course, all those courses have a lot of details with them. In addition to the approval, each person, or at least one person on staff, would participate in training. The nice thing about that is that because we are Title I school, training is free, so we would not have a lot of cost for training, other than if it's out of the state. Sometimes they have to travel out of the state, sometimes they're in the state. There's minimal costs for doing a little workaround, making sure that the curriculum... There's minimal costs for doing a little workaround, making sure that the curriculum and the lessons are in place to teach it, and then some resources. We believe, and I think basically probably what was put in there was approximately $6,000 per course, that that's going to far outweigh, I mean, the benefits of that are going to outweigh the costs associated with it. And again, from our perspective, unless we have tons of kids trying to sign up for that, it's really going to be pretty cost-effective, we believe, at this point, in terms of staffing. Of course, we don't know, we could have a lot of kids sign up for those courses, and happily, we would need to respond to that. But we believe, especially initially, that we would have to build capacity in that and really help kids understand it before a lot of kids are going to take those courses. What questions might you have for me?
I just want to say that it's really apparent that your expertise and your caringness, and I'm not just saying this, it's, I've known you for a long time, and you do care about our students, and this being a former student myself, and also I used to print the AP book on an offset printer, so I used to view all the pages all the time. But you can tell that your passion for Hazel Park, or just for any students, is there, and I do appreciate that from you. And this is so put together, and the AP courses are just so intuitive to what we need in Hazel Park, and you've seen that. And thank you so much. I do appreciate that.
As you mentioned, and I do want to add, because I always do want to recognize everybody, the two coordinators in the Teaching and Learning Department, Debbie Condek and Samantha Galchoff, first of all, are outstanding. They are doing amazing work in the district, and what they really did was help move this forward. They researched this, they contributed to the development of the memos, and they also supported that work at the high school. So I would be remiss in not mentioning the work that they did.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, HP course handbook.
This is my most exciting moment, I have to tell you. And we've been talking about revising the course handbook for years. And I'll tell you a little bit of backstory around the title of it, is that when we talked about doing this work, one of the things that we really wanted to make sure was that this book represented our college and career readiness pathways and opportunities at Hazel Park High School. I like to think of Hazel Park High School as kind of small but mighty. We have all these great opportunities for students. I'm not sure always that all of our families really understand all of the great opportunities we have. So as they went into this process, I tasked the team with revising that, but not just revising a course catalog, which you will see, all the courses are in there, but also really charting the pathway for how we're really celebrating and honoring the opportunities we have at Hazel Park and all the different pathways. So when they came and said, well, here's our course catalog, I said, you know, while it has the courses in there, I think we need to recognize all the work that was put into this, and that this is really is, as the title says, helping families and students chart their pathway through Hazel Park High School. You'll notice the way it's set up is it addresses our CTE programming, it addresses AP courses, it addresses dual enrollment, it addresses early middle college, we've got some positive movement toward that, and all the, and the school to work and the firefighter academy, all the different pathways. What we want our students and families to see is that whatever your pathway, whatever your interest is, we have that covered at Hazel Park High School. So I would definitely, if you haven't had a chance to read all of it, dig into it, I will tell you, you'll notice some things in there that are like highlighted yellow, things that we're still working through. That's really just getting some of the course numbers and things in there. Plus, the courses that I just spoke about certainly don't have a course number, because we would have to wait pending more approval. We've gone through this with a fine-tooth comb. I will tell you that between now and next Monday, there might be a few tweaks. I would certainly point those out to you. We just wanted to make sure we got this into your hands early, because it is a lot of reading. We hope that you see the amazing amount of work that was put into this. Once again, while I tasked the team with it, this isn't my work. This is really around an ISD consultant that supported us. It's around all the administrators at the high school. Samantha Galchoff was involved in this. Teachers were involved in it, our counselors, really trying to say, if we want to build a college and career readiness presence at Hazel Park High School, how does this handbook dictate that? And then one of the things in there you'll see that wasn't in past handbooks is, what is our scheduling process? So it's very clear to families, here's the information, and this is our process to get your students scheduled and up and running for the next school year. So very excited to bring this handbook to you. Once again, a very big collaborative effort with a lot of people with that same mission, hopefully support and help the students at Hazel Park High School, and make sure both our families and our students know what are the great opportunities we have.
I'm excited to read it, to be honest with you. I know it sounds kind of kiki, but.
No, I'd like to read it.
Because I used to have to type it all.
Any other comments or questions or concerns?
One little addition, if you don't mind. In addition, a little plug for the advertising. Mr. Plennis will be getting this out, but we are going to have on December 3, what we're going to call, we haven't finalized on the name, but it's like a college and career readiness post-secondary option opportunity at Hazel Park High School. We are just finalizing some of the little pieces to that, and we're going to get information out. And we really are going to look at bringing this book to life on that night, where we talk with our families about early middle college. We've invited Promison there to speak to everybody, so everybody understands what is, what are their opportunities. We will have people from the ISD, we will have people from OCC, we will have representatives from our school district, so families can come and learn about the opportunities and think ahead about what they're going to be doing as scheduling will start in January. Dr. Wilcox, do you want to add anything to that?
I believe it's out on social media already, to try to get people to hold the date. So you're going to have a December 1 board meeting, a December 2 ribbon cutting, and a December 3 course college high school night, that we're hoping that will encourage and get our early middle college rolling.
All right, nice. It was a week there, week. Okay, anything else? All right, Stephanie, I think you're up again.
Yes, our Leo report. I think probably you had an opportunity, hopefully, to read this. As we always do, we come and give a basic overview of our work with the ISD. As a reminder, the ISD supports the funding of one of our literacy coaches, and last year, starting last year, they really expanded that work to really focus more on something called continuous improvement, cultivating continuous improvement, which expanded it to, from literacy to literacy and math. As we always do, we try to take advantage of all of those supports and services. So we have a coach that's funded and supported through the ISD, as well as something called a NAML. I don't love the name, but I'll tell you what it means.
Thank you.
I was like, okay, was it not picked a better name? They, if they are involved in supporting math through the EPIC program, they like districts to select something called the non-administrative instructional leader, the NAML, who supports implementation network in the buildings. So, you know, we've really actually gotten a lot accomplished so far this year. We've got all of our literacy pieces and disciplinary literacy pieces underway. We've got a very well-thought-out plan. One of the things that we need to do as we do the work with the ISD is we have to assess ourselves, and if you notice, I gave you the summary of our assessment, we have to do that assessment in the fall and in the spring. And that assessment supports the actions that we put in place during the school year. And in addition to that, we always make sure that all the work through Leo and EPIC is aligned to our strategic plan. So those are some of the big highlights, a lot of great support from the ISD, and a lot of positive impact on our students and teachers.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or discussion?
Leo's informational only, right?
Yes.
We won't do this again next week.
All right, cybersecurity.
I have a report out, and let me see if this covers Ms. Fortress some of the questions you have. So on our, on our audit, it stated that the following items were discussed with management that are not considered material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. However, these items could improve controls and the operational efficiency of business and our compliance with laws and regulations. So from here, I had discussions with Brad, I had discussions with the audit firm, I had discussions with a superintendent that recently had a cyber concern occur. I reviewed the SETSEG guidance, and boy, I learned a lot around the way of some of these conversations that were happening. And so in '21 and '24, we had something done called a penetration test. And that test was done with this company that I have in front of you, Cyberforce, who, I'm sorry, I could only get on with them at 11 o'clock today. And this was paid for by the ISD. And so I thought, okay, well, we've done the pen test, so why is the auditor saying that we need to do something else? Well, from the '21 pen test to the '24, there were some items that were indicated and that were approved upon into the '24 pen test. And then the pen test only had a couple items for '24, but the recommendation that auditors are wanting to see now is that, one, that you complete everything in the pen test, and that you've adopted a management process for patches, and that you also have a disaster recovery plan. And so that aligns specifically what Cyberforce spoke with me about today, and Monica was on there as well. And so our proposal is, is that we, number one, bring Cyberforce in. What they will do is that they will come in and do a cyber assessment with our team, and it'll start in the January, February timeframe, and they will look at all the items that we have in place. And then, once they have done that assessment, then they will hold monthly sessions with us, not in person, it'll all be remote. And each month, they will give us deliverables that they feel we need to have to improve that process. And then from there, they would do a final assessment in the end, and then, and then expect us to do a pen test one more time to see what that's happening. Mind you, that pen test is really about our HP thing. So when I looked at one of the pen tests, it said United Oaks Sign, right? Because there's some, so I think working with the firm, having conversation, talking about software upgrades and such, we have very, very little that sits within this HP world and backup, but my suggestion is that we go ahead and do this, and that it's $10,000, it's a year-long process, and then we will have to pay for the 2026 pen testing as well, unless the ISD is picking that up. Right now, we believe that we might be able to get this paid for by E-Rate, but we haven't confirmed that yet. As we're, it took a long time to get everybody on the phone to kind of, I wanted firsthand myself to understand what they were saying and what they were doing, and where they were going with this, and all the ins and outs, and why, you know, why the pen test wasn't enough. And so I think that Cyberforce will also help you to understand that along the way, and also have the disaster recovery plan. I did speak, as I said, with the school district of a person that has gone through some of this and heard some of the things that they've done. They use Cyberforce as well. They're, and they're using somebody else in the future, but it seems like they were very knowledgeable, have a great background, and might be the first place for us to start.
How much is that? Do we know how much the pen test was?
The ISD paid for it.
Oh, so we didn't even see a bill?
No.
I have a quick question. So in the $10,000, is all those used and they're going to come and once a month give you something to implement?
Yes, so they first come in, they first do an assessment, and then they start developing the plan. And out of that plan, they will, I think I put all of this in it in here, which you obviously did not get to see because it came to you at the table, but they will give us a cyber assessment. They will then give us recommendations, and then we will, they will help us to deliver, develop a cybersecurity improvement plan, and then a baseline incident response plan, and then monthly sessions they'll look, and then after a year, they'll do an assessment. And then, you know, we will have actually an application license for all of that. The pen test, if we do that again, will be extra dollars that we have out there. I don't know if that can be covered by E-Rate, but I'm sure when Brad has that conversation that he will do that. So it was a very informative learning process, so thank you for putting this on my plate, because it really kind of pushed some additional learning and thinking around some other things that are happening, given the change of cyber stalking and cyber pieces. I also want to note to everyone that one of the other concerns on the audit was not having a vault for the information. We have a vault, and only three people have access to that vault at this time, and it's password protected.
Did you want to add something? I see you came up to the podium.
No, just in case there were any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
So is this something that should go up for an RFP? Since we RFPed for the strategic plan, is this something that should go up for an RFP also?
I would say that it doesn't have to, if the board certainly wants to. This is the firm that is recommended by the ISD, because I spoke with them as well, as well as SETSEG, which is our insurance carrier. So it'd be my recommendation to go with the organization that's already done our two pen testing and that can deliver it off. You know, that pen testing is not something that we can share and we can have out there anywhere, so it is all confidential safety information. And so I would, I, my recommendation is to not, if in the future we maybe want to do something, but this is the firm that everybody's recommending. As opposed to strategic plans, everybody recommends all the different firms that, and you have to decide what's good for you. This is really our recommendation to you of who we believe, after research, that should do it for us.
Did you have any issues with them, dealing with them when they were doing the?
No.
Pen test in '21, '24?
No, the ISD brought in a laptop that we just hooked up to our network, and then they did the findings and all that stuff that they were trying to exploit in about a month, and then two months later, we had the results.
Okay, first. All right, anybody else?
Thank you. I think it's important for us to. Thank you.
Elementary class size.
So I only got as far as elementary class size in our request, and I have to think through a little bit about the junior high and how to go back to last year, and there's just not enough hours in the day. But what I did here, even for myself, for thinking through, is you'll see that I have 2025s, early fives in kindergarten at each school, what the class size was, or not the class size, what the number of students were, and then the average class sizes in that. So the first number is the 25 average class size, and the 13 is the, is this year's class size. The same thing at Hoover, the same thing at United Oaks. So the green and the red, the red means class size went up, and it doesn't mean it's bad, it doesn't mean it's good, it just means it went up. And the class sizes went down is green. So I think it was really helpful to see this. Really, the area that got hit the most, I think, is United Oaks and Webb's fifth grade with increases in class size. And then, you know, as also you can see, United Oaks, second grade. All of these class sizes, though, are well within our guide of where we would like to be. Would we like lower class sizes? Yes, but you have to make a determination about, and we worked really hard this year of, no, you can't go to this school, you got to go to this school, and then I'm not going to come, well, then you're not going to come, you know, conversation. And we balanced it as best that we could. It is very difficult to do, but we did a lot of that in this upcoming school year, so. Teachers are working hard.
Okay, any questions or discussion on elementary class size?
This is informational only too, right?
Yes, you will not see this again next week. You'll also not see the three-year plans again. You'll see the funky.
Thinking.
The thinking button that will come next week for asking for your approval to move forward.
All right, second public comment. I have no papers. Anybody out there? No? You're good? All right. Can I go, a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We have board comments.
Oh, you're right, it doesn't say that.
I know.
You're doing a good job.
I was going to try to sneak it in before anybody could.
First off, I am just curious, I've asked two times now for the invoices from all of the law firms, and I'm still not receiving. Is there any reason?
Well, one, I think that's a good conversation for the board to have about asking for what we're doing or not. In my meeting with Ms. Hinton, she asked for me to wait, but my understanding, and I started writing this to you this week, is that sometimes when I was not present last year, that they would sit with the superintendent and look at individual items. My concern has been that everybody can't see everything, and you don't know the. My concern is then that everybody can't see everything, and you don't know the conversation. So I think really this board is going to have to give me advice and guidance. Do know that when you ask us to stop and do, you're taking us away from the items that we're trying to complete. I can say to you that Ms. LaFramboise, your questions took me an hour and a half, and then additional questions took me an hour and a half. And I know you said I didn't have to do them right away.
I did say that.
But it took care of some of my memo items that I was going to do, but then, given last night's events, I didn't get to my memo. And so we just need to decide and give guidance of when we're going to do that. We certainly can pull all of them, but I was asked to hold off, and she's gone. So if the board would like to direct us to pull all of those and give copies to the entire board, I would, I need to have guidance. I can't have two different directions.
Also, kind of along with what you're saying, that it took you a long time. I'm kind of struggling because I see that you guys are here until 7:30 at night, and you're probably here at 7 o'clock in the morning. And we are asking and asking and asking and asking. So I don't know how we can do it, but I feel like as a board, we need to start figuring out ways to, again, ask for items or send a million questions. I know we want answers, but like, I feel like you guys are drained, and it's like, hurting me to see you guys like that. So I don't know how we can come up with something better, but I feel like we have to come up with something better, because of your work until 10 o'clock at night, and you're here at 6 o'clock in the morning. Like, I understand it's your job, but it's a lot to go. Like, you guys are going all day and all night, and I appreciate it, all the hard work. It's, I just feel bad. I do. Crazy one to acknowledge, I'm super happy with all the AP classes. It is wonderful to see. I know plenty of kids would be excited about that. I do want to say happy Early Veterans Day. I know we have one out here, I have my husband at home. So thank you so much for your service, we appreciate it. And I do want to acknowledge a little bit of Longfellow. So I get parents' concerns, I have a young kid as well. But we did vote for security over there, and it was turned down. So in my opinion, I don't feel like extra people should be in the building unless we have the security there. That is just my thought on that, but I just wanted to put that out there.
All right. Any outside public comment?
There you go. I, that was actually one of mine that I was going to say a couple months ago. There was a proposal for staff at Longfellow, and I think that would go a long way towards being able to have additional people in the building. I don't, we don't have requests for agenda items specifically on today's agenda, but I would love to see that brought back, if not next week, really soon, so that we could reconsider that and make sure that that building is accessible to as many people as need to be there. I think if somebody was there after hours, then access to the building could potentially be expanded. And I certainly, you know, Mr. Alom gave a great public comment earlier. I, I know him well, my kids were junior Vikings with his son, and it was, it was nice to, to be able to be part of a, a community and understand what was going on, even not, not being in the gym, but being able to, you know, talk to everybody else and, and just, you know, chat during practices. I would love to see that brought back as an agenda item, so that we could vote on having staff at Longfellow again. I also, Ms. Jackson gave a great public comment. I would like to, obviously, our administrators were working well into the night. Hazel Park Police Department was working well into the night. Thank you to both of them for, you know, doing what they had to do to ensure that our kids were safe in school. I really empathize with her tearing up, because like, damn, it is, like, it's really, really hard seeing that, you know, it was here, it was, I think it was Halloween yesterday, too, that over and over again, and we're just like, sending kids off into school every day. I think we've got a really good opportunity with Longfellow. You know, there's the ribbon cutting on the, on December 2 for that. The, the point of that was really to be, you know, focused on students' needs and, and mental health and building community and making sure that they had, you know, an education-focused place to go where they could, where they could build community with their peers, with their parents, with, with everything that's going on here. I would love to see maybe like a, an expansion of Safe at Home and Build Up the Park and see if, if we couldn't have, you know, coping skills or empathy or, you know, how to work through things like that, that would be amazing. And I think it's really great that Ms. Jackson came, and she was able to say that to us. Kudos to her, and I struggled, but she did a great job. And I'll, those two things are the most important, so I'll let it go there.
Heidi, do you have anything?
I'll just pick back off both them. I'm, I'm not quite sure if I understand why parents aren't allowed at Longfellow, but maybe if we can have that discussion next week.
All right. Is that for you?
I also agree we should have that discussion. We should give it to the superintendent and let the superintendent bring back the information, you know, information to us. Maybe those questions that was written to us, too, she could go over those questions and, so that everybody's on the same page. There's not a lot, you know, there, but there, you know, there is the concern of, of, you know, and of the, the parents going in. But I, I think giving her some time to settle in on that, since it only happened yesterday, the questions only happened yesterday, I think would be appropriate, so that way we can do the right thing. And if the board has to vote to help the superintendent, guide the superintendent, then we should help her out and vote on the way that we, you know, want to see fit, so we can guide her in what this, that, you know, I'm just crazy. It's late, I'm ready to go. You get what I'm saying?
So on and so forth.
Yeah, so on and so forth. Thank you.
I wanted to thank everybody for their hard work, because you can see that a lot of work went into tonight's event. I also thought Ms. Jackson did a great job, and I hope that she, I like that she brought suggestions, and I hope she will send that to us, so we have that, those suggestions, and we commit through them. But I think that's it for me.
Can I have?
You, oh, I got you. You're being tight. Sorry.
You were so anxious to get it going and get up. Well, first of all, I want to speak about this, right? Around 9 o'clock, I received a phone call, and by 10:30, the police were on point to doing what they need to do. And I really have to thank our SROs and the Hazel Park Police Department that worked collaboratively, as well as teachers, students, parents, the over, the outpour of conversation that as soon as they saw something, they made it happen. I received three okay-to-says while we were sitting here and working. And listen, it has to stop. Halloween was closed today, and you're absolutely correct. Actually, the, the conversation that Ms. Jackson had, a student sent to me today and said, "Dr. Purpy, can we have, Dr. Wilcox, Dr. Wilcox, can we have some sessions at the high school where students understand the implications of guns, the safety around them, the comments that they make?" And I haven't had a moment to respond back, but this is one of the same students last night that said, "I am fearful. I am fearful for my siblings when I see things like this." And it's got to be an empowerment for parents to help and to step up with this along the way, and continued for them to see something, say something along the way. So kudos to our kids, who immediately reached out, our parents, and the Hazel Park Police Department that, that were fantastic about that. I did respond to several items. Listen, you have to decide if you're going to be governing board that governs through policies, or you're going to give directions about how people visit. And allow me to work through these things, actually allow the athletic director to work through, and eventually Mrs. Gressley. Every step and consideration that you do has impact. When that, what you decide to do, when you open that building as a whole, I'm still working with Mr. Patterson to discuss, like, what can we have and what can't we have in there? Are there issues around mental health programs? What kind of agreements do we have to sign? What kind of things do we have to do? How do we watch what's happening? We do not want people running through that building. Right now, the way it's set up, I believe that the hall width is too narrow to put people into that hall. What is the actual capacity now of the gym? These are all things that your superintendent has to review and go through. And please, let me do it, send the questions. I really appreciate you, Ms. LaFramboise, for, or trusty LaFramboise, Vice President, President tonight, for reaching out to me, because that's the communications that's supposed to go through, and it is my job to make sure. When you make decisions that I can't enforce or that put us in the way of potential harm, that's an issue. I had a very productive, productive phone call with Mr. Johnston with some ideas around how we do after-school programming with individuals that have disabilities or individuals that have medical needs, and suggested some ideas to go through that. I have the architect coming in tomorrow at Longfellow to want to assess and review the, discuss how we determine the size and the amount of people that can be in that gym, it's very small, and what are the parameters around the hall. I'm not sure if people understand that you can't have tables out in the hall. That's not a fire code, that's an OSHA violation. You can't have items right next to the doors because you have to have a clear item that's in there. You can't have chairs sitting in a hallway when people have to go out for a fire. God forbid we should ever have one, but that is my job as superintendent to uphold those options for you and why I've received the training and reach out and ask additional questions. So please, let's send me off to bring you more information, but really, those are decisions that superintendents and individuals make, not a board about who can go in and go out. Because your implications then lead us down the line, and we try to make suggestions about how we make determinations, like, do we want to fingerprint everybody that comes in? Because there could be kids inside there as well. We're currently writing a grant for out-of-school time through the Promise Zone and through here, so we can have activities and opportunities for our kids on top of the mental health resources that are coming in from Oakland County. Then whenever we decide, then are we going to take back some decisions? Because now we have kids in the building at those times with after-school programming. These are all things that take time and will not be ready in seven days for you at the next board meeting, because we need to look at this holistically. I mentioned this last night to Mr. Johnston, that when you make a decision, it has impact on other things. And so please, pick up the phone, call me. We're deeply considering the things that people are requesting and making sure that, long-term, that this facility provides an opportunity for everyone. But primarily, it was meant to be a community center for mental health and out-of-school time programming for kids. And that is the grant and lies within the, the meaning of the grant, and thus, community schools over there, thus, we have grant opportunities for programs to help us with that. I hope that helps. I want to be transparent to the, to everyone about the work that we continue to do, and we really see this as a wonderful opportunity. I hope you will come on December 2. If you would like to go in before then, please let me know. I'm happy to meet you over there, and I'm happy at any point in time to sit down with you privately and have conversations that you'd like to have about any of this. There's a lot going on this week, please watch your calendars. I want to mention that we were given an opportunity to have food distribution, over 500 boxes of food to, only to Hazel Park students. I believe that I have 15 volunteers. I haven't gotten a chance to go in and look. We need about 15 volunteers. I know, Mr. Patterson, I knew you'd come, I sent the invite. From 2 to 4, some of our staff has asked if they can get to it. I saw the form come in late this afternoon on the things that they'll have to fill out and things that we'll need to know, so we will get more information out to our staff. But if you have a child here in Hazel Park School, no matter your zip code, there is food here that is available for you on Wednesday. On Friday, we have Gleaners. Anyone can come to Gleaners. You don't have to be a Hazel Park student or a, so that's Hazel Park or Ferndale or Detroit or whatever residence, anyone can come anytime to Gleaners. And it usually goes fast. We also will have 40 turkeys. Thank you to the Promise Zone on Build Up the Park. So the first 40 that register and attend and stay the entire time will get a free turkey. Thank you to the Promise Zone.
When is that?
That is the
November 20. And it's dinner and data, so we'll be talking about your math data that evening for families. We also will feed you. There is a Thanksgiving dinner provided by Chartwells, and then we'll have the presentation, and then the turkey comes after you sit through the presentations.
After. We're trying to encourage our parents to continue to join this community and to be a part of it, and to learn about the items that are happening within the school environment, and, so that they can learn, and they can see the, the feedback from the programs as well. So lots of great things. Watch your social media feed. And we're also sending, I sent letters to all the parents today for all the schools about the food.
If I may just say one more thing, I, the administration here is on long hours, weekends, et cetera. And if the board happens to see them out trying to help feed people, trying to help curb this terrible, terrible thing that's been created with people not being able to eat, and it's just sad to me. We should applaud them, the administrators and administration, whoever is out there, and applaud them and, and say thank you, plus all the hard work that they're doing for their job. And on top of that, taking two, three hours to hand out boxes. I, I just want to say thank you very much for, for doing that. And, and that, as a board, we should not criticize that.
All right. And now can we go?
Can I motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I have a motion to adjourn to our second. Monica, thank you for the motion and the second. Adjourn.